...form of Superintendent Dean Damon. Some of you will recognize that name. He was a visionary, he was popular, he was progressive, and he was an extraordinary human being. However, a group of, a faction of the school board disagreed with him philosophically and sought to remove him and succeeded. In the aftermath of that experience, Boulder Valley suffered for years and years because we had a series of superintendents who were shortsighted and short-lived in the office. And as we look forward, we see that Bruce Messenger inherited that mantle. That mantle of progressivism, that mantle of hands-on progress for our students in Boulder We, also during that time, we had unity disintegrate into not diversity but chaos. And that portends not well for the aftermath of a process that is similar. I've taken the liberty to go back and look at all of your campaign literature. And as I have done that, I have noted that you called to our attention that we needed to address the increasing the graduation rate, also addressing funding issues, also inclusion of educators in decision-making, also equity among and between schools, also class size, also community confidence in what we're doing in educating our young people, and making sure that we have a maximum place of learning and safety for all students without exception. Boulder Valley has made remarkable progress in each one of your priorities, and that's due to the leadership of Bruce Messenger. Without exception, we're doing most things right, and we got there by keeping the main things the main things. Friends, there's much to regret about the current situation and the process by which we've arrived at this place. But I would bring to our attention Hippocrates imperative to do no harm. Do no harm to Boulder Valley schools. Do no harm to our students and do no harm to our communities. Do no harm to our progressive vision and do no harm to Bruce Messenger. I encourage you not only to allow but to support Bruce Messenger in leading Boulder Valley. Take a long look and a long view, and please avoid the temptation to invite a repeat of our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Breann Hagan. Breann Hagan, who will be followed by Lisa Omori-Jones. Ms. Hagan, are you here? If not, we will move next to Lisa Omori-Jones, who will be followed by Andrew O'Connor. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I'm Lisa Omori-Jones. I'm a teacher at Angefine Middle School. I'm also a parent of a student at Monarch K8, and I reside in Lewisville as well. Dear BVSD School Board, it has come to the attention of BVEA members that consideration of superintendent's contract has been added to the agenda for this evening's meeting. This is cause for dismay for those of us who very much appreciate the leadership provided by Superintendent Messenger and do not understand what is happening now. In the middle of our district's spring break week, we received a message from you notifying us that Superintendent Messenger was being placed on administrative leave pending investigation of a personal matter. The leave was meant to ensure the integrity of the investigation and was in no way an indication of belief of guilt. Projected timeline, 30 days. We are now well past the projected timeline, and not one word of further information has been shared, and now this consideration of superintendent's contract. What was the outcome of your investigation? We, the teachers of BVSD, have been given no information or opportunity to offer input, ask question, or process information. Our work with the superintendent has required that we put a measure of trust in him and that he do the same for us. It cannot be in the best interest of our district or its leadership to make significant changes that trust shrouded in mystery and lack of information. I urge you to consider carefully.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrew O'Connor. I'm a BVSD parent of a third grader. I'm here to ask you to do the right thing and terminate Dr. Messenger's contract. I think it's in the best interest of Boulder Valley School District to do that. Last year I was here, and I asked you to fire Bruce Messenger. Last year I was forced to sue Mr. Messenger in federal court because he would not do the right thing and would not do anything about bullying at my daughter's elementary school. That lawsuit cost taxpayers over $30,000 that you wasted defending Mr. Messenger. Now I read that you spent more money, wasted money, hiring an attorney and investigator to investigate Mr. Messenger. Mr. Messenger makes over $250,000 a year. Fire him. Hire somebody at half that rate and give teachers and parent educators a raise. Do the right thing.
Thank you. We'll move now to speakers on non-agenda items, and we do take students first. Our first student is Isaac, and let me see if I can get your last name, Isaac. Isaac Sherman, are you with us? Hey, good evening.
Hi, my name is Isaac Sherman. I'm a ninth grader and I have dyslexia. I want to share my experience about reading in front of the class in elementary school and what that was like for me. My heart racing, my teacher calls me up, tells me I need to read out loud, read to my classmates, and I try to speak up. I try to explain that I'm too dumb, but the words won't come out. I try to shout that I can't, but I won't do it. I'm embarrassed to what my friends will think. I try to look around, I try to stall before my head crawls down into my book where I start to read the first line, but I can't finish it. I feel the tears start to swell up in my eyes. I feel so ashamed and dumb, I'm thinking, why do I work so hard if I can't even read a single line? So I just sat there, and I felt a tear roll down my cheek. I tried to hide, I tried to hide it staring down on my page, thinking how dumb I was. And I wish I knew I was smart. I wish I knew I really just had dyslexia. All the tears and the sadness that I felt struggling through homework every night, all the secrets that I tried to keep from everyone that I could barely read till the third grade, all the insecurity that I carried with me throughout elementary school could have been avoided. I was diagnosed with dyslexia at the end of fifth grade. I'm not sure how much you guys know about dyslexia, but that's pretty late. We are in the 21st century, and we have the technology to do this. You guys have the money to make this happen. I never want a kid to go through what I went through, especially when they don't have to. There's nothing holding us back from making this happen, so that's why I'm asking you guys tonight to please never let a kid go through the insecurity and sadness as I felt as a young boy, and please take a long look at putting some serious money towards dyslexia because it will not only help kids, but I believe it can change people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, another student, is Posey Gievenko. Posey Gievenko, are you with us? Oh, hey, good evening. Hi.
Hi, my name is Posey Gievenko. I am in second grade and I go to Ryan Elementary. I have dyslexia and it is hard for me to read, to learn, and to keep up with the rest of my class. Every day I get picked up from my class by Ms. Heather Dahlke. She is teaching me Barton, and it is making it easier for me to read, write, and to spell. In my classroom, it is harder for me to learn because my teacher doesn't really understand how I read, how I write, and how I spell. I wish more kids got Barton. I wish more teachers could understand.
Thank you, Posey. Well done. Our next speaker is Tara Gievenko. Good evening.
I'm her mom. It's the proudest I've ever been just now. It was just amazing. I gotta keep it together. Okay, so a common statistic that's thrown around is that one in five is dyslexic, or 20% of our population. Now, I know on the board that there's been a level of uncertainty of this statistic, so I'm going to share some other statistics, how that 20% can impact our world. Over 50% of NASA employees are dyslexic. 34% of entrepreneurs are dyslexic. 25% of CEOs are dyslexic. Steve Jobs, Albert Einstein, Richard Branson, two of the sharks on Shark Tank, Pablo Picasso, Winston Churchill, Charles Schwab, the CEOs and founders of Kinko's and IKEA. The things that dyslexics don't do well, like read quickly or follow detailed instructions, are what we measure in school. We measure these in tests like the SAT, the MCAT, the GRE, and the LSAT. And what do you think happens when you tell really smart kids that they are dumb, or lazy, or not trying hard enough, or that they are wasting the class's time because they cannot follow multiple-step instructions? 64% of kids who drop out of high school are dyslexic. 80% of inmates in Texas are dyslexic. Both Ohio and Texas use third-grade reading proficiency tests to forecast the prison populations. So I'm going to ask you, are we raising entrepreneurs or are we raising prisoners? We need a plan for these kids, and it should start in kindergarten with screening. All teachers should receive awareness training, and we should be teaching kids to read using structured literacy programs like Barton and Orton-Gillingham. My daughter's last I-Ready score proves the effectiveness of Barton as she climbed 70 points since January and is finally on level. And you could put her in that one in five or 20% bucket, but after her courageous display tonight, I'd say she's one in a million.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Oakley. Andrea Oakley is next, followed by Kelly Sokol. Good evening, Ms. Oakley.
Good evening. My name is Andrea, and my son Tobin has dyslexia. He is bright, sweet, and I wish you could all meet him. I know he'd want to be your friend and read with you. In preschool, I noticed that Tobin couldn't name his colors, but he could sort them. He couldn't name his shapes, but he could sort them. After two years in preschool, he couldn't name his friends or his teachers. He called them "hey, friend." I was told not to worry. I did research and presented dyslexia. I was told not to worry. I wrote an essay on Tobin and dyslexia. I was told, maybe, but we don't test for or do intervention for dyslexia until fourth grade. In kindergarten, I presented my concerns and was told not to worry. In first grade, his classroom teacher agreed there might be something wrong, but she wasn't allowed to use the D-word. In first grade, his teacher told me he wasn't far enough behind for literacy intervention. Then he was too far behind for literacy intervention. Finally, his teacher pushed the issue and got him in the third session. But as many of us know, LLI doesn't work for dyslexia. So as his peers passed through the program, Tobin was stuck. His reading partner in class shamed him. "Tobin, why are you such a bad reader? Why can't you read?" He started telling me that he wasn't a reader. The school said they couldn't test for dyslexia, so I had private testing done. Results? Tobin has dyslexia. And here's where our story changes. We got lucky. Tobin's literacy interventionist had training on how to teach using the Barton system. He pushed and fought for Tobin to have the opportunity to learn via the Barton system. He has worked with Tobin for three days a week after school, teaching him to read. In just under one year's time, Tobin has made a year-and-a-half's worth of progress and is now reading at grade level. Almost more importantly, he's reading for pleasure. It is absolutely vital that we have the funding to train teachers and interventionists on teaching methods proven to work for children with dyslexia. I hope you get the pleasure of seeing a child's world blossom and open up as their struggle to learn and read leads them to success and lets them self-identify as a reader and frees them from shame and self-doubt. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly Sokol, who has been given an additional two minutes from Leslie Newman. After Ms. Sokol will be Kevin DeHaan. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kelly Sokol, and I'm honored to be here this evening to speak to the board on behalf of my daughter Madeline, who is a seventh grader in BVSD. I am so thrilled to learn about the increased teacher training and effective learning methods like the Orton-Gillingham approach for reading intervention for kids with learning differences. Early intervention is key. Sadly, no intervention was available in this school district when we needed it. It's too little, too late for my daughter. Here is a part of her story. Kindergarten at Birch Elementary, my husband and I sat in her spring conference and uttered the words, "I think she might be dyslexic." We knew she was still not reading as well as a six-year-old should, and in her writing we still saw very odd-shaped, flipped letters. And I remember being clearly told that it was too early to diagnose her with any type of learning difference. By this time, we had already sought out on our own testing twice by a psychologist in Boulder who does social, emotional, and academic testing. Early testing already indicated that, quote, "Maddie struggled with several learning differences that were interfering with her ability to function in her life." My daughter was already struggling with processing negative emotions and feelings of frustration, anger, sadness, and some anxiety. She expressed to the psychologist during this very early testing at age six that she already felt, quote, "left out by peers" and, quote, "sad about mean girls." And so began the slow disintegration of her precious self-esteem. On to first grade, still struggling. Her first-grade teacher had one of the "good writers" write a story for Maddie while Maddie dictated for a literacy night at school because Maddie's writing was so illegible. The school said there was no literacy intervention available for first graders. The school also said there was no diagnostic test they could administer to diagnose a learning disability. In November of her third-grade year, still knowing in our gut that she was not a typical learner, we sought out yet another psychological test on our own by a licensed clinical psychologist in Westminster. Her test scores were consistent with the diagnosis of moderate dyslexia and ADHD. Finally, we knew. In fourth grade, with the academic expectations higher, Maddie started to slip through the cracks, and her self-esteem took a plummet. She was getting ones in math and twos in many of her other subjects. We were spending $120 an hour on a tutor, but Maddie was not meeting academic standards. In late November of her fourth-grade year, after being told that the school didn't know what to do to help, we decided to put Maddie at Hillside School. If you're not familiar with Hillside, it is a private school in Boulder that believes, quote, "Students with dyslexia or other learning differences that impede their academic process in a regular school setting deserve to be taught in a manner that allows them to gain the academic skills they need to become capable and confident learners." Two phenomenal years at the school unfortunately came with a price tag of almost $30,000, something that we are still recovering from as a family. The very sad part of Maddie's story came in the second half of her sixth-grade year at Brimfield Heights Middle School. We could no longer afford to send her to Hillside. The perfect storm of many things, academic struggle, low self-esteem, mean girls, school teacher, and administrative incompetency, et cetera, led to a very deep dive into depression and anxiety. One year ago, almost to this day, my daughter revealed to us that she no longer wanted to be on this earth. She had a very detailed note and a plan. After a stay at Children's Hospital and a lot of therapy, I'm happy to say she's still on this earth and she is doing better. However, she was unsuccessful this year in seventh grade at Aspen Creek K8, so she is now doing online school through Boulder Universal here in BVSD. We do see glimmers of hope, and we know that the out-of-box thinking of her dyslexic brain will one day serve this world well. The lack of early intervention for my daughter came at a huge cost to our family. We have seen firsthand how lack of early intervention sets the stage for a plethora of struggles. BVSD has failed to provide my daughter with a free, appropriate public education. I implore you to continue to allocate more funds and resources to early detection and early intervention for kids with learning differences. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin DeHaan, who will be followed by Elaine Hewitt. Mr. DeHaan, good evening, welcome.
My eight-year-old daughter is a second grader with BVSD, and she is my inspiration. My daughter has dyslexia. Since kindergarten, she struggled with reading and spelling and scored significantly below grade level. The wait-and-see approach suggested by the school left my wife and me with many questions. Current tools didn't detect the warning signs. Last year, we decided to get a private evaluation and learned that she was dyslexic. It does not have to be a struggle. Let me continue with two facts. Fact one, 35% of fourth graders read below the basic level. Of these students, 80% will read below grade level in ninth grade. Let's pause on that for a moment. This is a five-year span. Think of the daily battle each one of these children face. The impact on self-esteem can have lifelong consequences. Fact two, dyslexia screening and structured literacy programs make financial sense. For example, the state of Ohio recently conducted a three-year pilot program with five different school districts. Each district achieved a savings of one to three times their program cost through prevention of expensive intervention. We owe it to the children of BVSD to provide the following: dyslexia screening for each kindergartner, teacher awareness, and a structured, research-based literacy program for every child that provides phonetic support. To conclude, we have a tremendous community of smart and caring teachers, but they need our help. We can make a difference for all children. Proficient reading is foundational, supporting knowledge, curiosity, and confidence. Fundamentals no child should be denied.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elaine Hewitt. Elaine, H-U-O-T? Hewitt, I apologize. After Ms. Hewitt will be Julia Vandenover. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to everyone here about the impact of early screening, identification of dyslexia for students attending BVSD schools. My name is Elaine Hewitt, and I'm a successful dyslexic. I have had the best of teaching careers both in Canada and here in Colorado. I have taught special education for 35 years in North America in both English and French and held three different jobs in BVSD. With its extensive experience, I've worked with hundreds of students with specific learning disabilities, specifically dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyskelpia, none of which are recognized by CDE as learning disabilities. They are cloaked completely and utterly under the label of SLD. Tonight, I want to speak to the importance of early identification of students who demonstrate language-based challenges and deficits. These challenges and deficits, supported by accurate data using normed assessments, help to find the markers of dyslexia. When we are able to assess young children as young as four years of age using normed assessments, we can determine if any deficits in phonemic awareness, which is the ability to think about and manipulate speech sounds inside syllables, is present. Lack of phonemic awareness is one of the best and most reliable predictors of specific learning disabilities or dyslexia. Dyslexia is a spectrum disorder that can be present as mild to severe, as a severe disability. According to IDA, International Dyslexia Association, it is a language-based learning disability that impacts both reading and writing across the curriculum. It is a lifelong disability affecting 20%, up to 20% of the population. Dyslexia is not tied to one's IQ and occurs in people from all socioeconomic levels. Identifying students as early as age four will support general education and special education teachers as they attempt to differentiate the curriculum for students with mild-to-severe dyslexia. It is not complicated, difficult, nor expensive. Boulder Valley now owns the comprehensive test of phonological processing and can be purchased for as little as $400 and is now normed for students as young as the age of four.
If you could wrap up your remarks, please, I appreciate it.
I urge you to consider the importance of identifying students as young as possible so that they can have good success for their educational lives and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Vandenover is next, followed by Stephanie Behr. Ms. Vandenover, are you with us? Okay, Stephanie Behr, who will be followed by Amanda Dean. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Behr, and I have two children attending Monarch K8. My youngest is in fifth grade. When she was in kindergarten and first grade, I brought my concerns about her struggles with reading to her teachers, and my concerns were dismissed. They were not concerned with her struggles. When she was in second grade, by chance I saw a documentary on dyslexia, and I immediately knew that that was the issue my child was struggling with. I paid for a very expensive evaluation to have this confirmed. The district failed to do any early screening on my child. My child did receive interventions at Monarch that had little impact on her ability to read. Even the reading specialist admitted that she knew nothing about dyslexia. We sought out a tutor that specializes in dyslexia, and I asked if this tutor could come to work with my child during school hours, and this was denied. So after a long day of school, my child goes to tutoring one to two times a week at my expense, adding another hour worth of work on top of a full day of school and homework. And for the past three years, my child has been invited to participate in BVSD's summer school. The first year, I enrolled her in it. So instead of spending her summer at a fun camp, she spent her summers in the classroom. I failed to ask what kind of literacy program the summer program would be offering. It was no different than what was being offered during the school year and made no positive impact on my child. This year, she was invited to attend again, and I saw no point in making her endure another summer working with teachers who have no training or understanding about the dyslexic brain. To repeat what many parents and educators have shared with you over the past few school board meetings, I-Ready is not a screening tool. The majority of BVS teachers do not understand dyslexia, cannot adequately teach dyslexic students, and in our experience, many have lacked sensitivity around my child's struggles. There are $8 million in extra funding for Mill Levy Funds. Please do the right thing and finally help these underserved kids now with these dollars. All teachers need training, and there are many committed districts across the country making great strides committing to literacy-based programs that meet the needs of all learners. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Amanda Dean is next, followed by Jen Spurlin. Good evening, Ms. Dean.
Hello. I'm Amanda Dean. I am a longtime parent at Pioneer Elementary. I am back because my last presentation did not appear to have any noticeable impact. I previously requested the district send someone to Pioneer to hear from concerned parents about real problems at the school, which I care about so much. My contact information is in Infinite Campus for four BVSD students, yet I have heard nothing. I would like to acknowledge the camera as they were able to find me without having the benefit of my contact information. To recap, first this year, children have been injured in both of my kids' classrooms. Those injuries have come from people approved to be inside the school. One, a classmate; one, a teacher; and one rumored to be a parent. I accept 100%. I accept 100% that my kids are not safe in this world and that some things are beyond one's reasonable ability to control. However, two of the events could have been avoided. But putting that aside, I believe the district has an obligation to look out for the students' well-being and send in district counseling support for kids experiencing traumatic situations. We are 18 days since the teacher incident and there has been no outreach from the district. Yet multiple parents are paying for private counseling for their kids, which indicates that the need is there. Please put the children first. Second, for the parents in the affected 4th grade classroom, this has been a significant waste of an academic year as the new teacher noted above was ill-equipped to manage the classroom. A sizable number of families have left our school, many for St. Vrain, which is a cultural loss to the school and a financial loss to BVSD. As a result, we are looking at the loss of a 4th or 5th grade teacher and parents have heard that the district has asked Pioneer to offer a combined 4th, 5th grade class next year. Combining this class works only for the budget, not for the students or the parents. Where have the needs of the students been taken into account? Unfortunately, if the school offers the combined class, my understanding is that more families are poised to leave. We have tremendous opportunity on the horizon with our new principal. Please help us turn our school around by making up for this bad year and supporting our 4th and 5th grade classes with an extra teacher for the next few years. This will allow everyone to focus their energies on the students, their academic achievement, and a healthy, productive school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Spurlin. And after Ms. Spurlin will be Michael Bucy. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. This is my first school board meeting and it's quite an exciting one, so. I'm here to talk about my son and I actually have a success story kind of mixed in with all the other stories and he has dyslexia. We decided that we felt like private school was the answer for him in kindergarten, so we took him to a private school where we had struggles and it was really all behavioral-based. And looking back, kind of knowing the story, it feels like it was reading-based and they weren't able to identify it, just like those at the public school level. We then felt like private school was not answering his needs and felt like we needed to come to public school and we were so lucky to come to Lafayette Elementary. It is a fabulous school and they've worked with us through the whole process. He came in 2nd grade and during this time, our fabulous teacher, Stephanie Downing, said something's not right. Looking back, I think that she felt like she couldn't say what she knew it was because I felt like we heard from other educators that if she said it looked like dyslexia, that they would have to support it and they couldn't. So she kind of just said something's not right, I think you need to look into it and we were lucky enough and it never dawned on me not to have him privately screened because we had the money and the ability to do that. I know now, stepping back, that there's lots of families that don't have that ability. So we went to a private psychologist in Westminster who quickly, it was funny, during the testing, she just kind of looked over at me and she's like, there's no way he doesn't have it. He came out with an extremely high IQ and extremely severe level of dyslexia. And she gave me the whole story about all the great people, Albert Einstein, all these smart people that had it so his life wasn't going to be impacted by it. But what we learned really quickly is it wasn't him that was going to limit his abilities. It really came down to the support system he was going to receive. And he has been included in the Barton Pilot Program. We are so thankful to Lafayette and everything that you guys have done for us and we hope that that can continue for the next year and for other children.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Bucy, who will be followed by Janine Wire. Good evening.
My name is Michael Bucy and I'm the parent of a 3rd grader with dyslexia. Tonight, I would like to discuss the proposed 2017-2018 budget. The administration recently proposed a total of $500,000 in one-time funds designated for dyslexia. As an advocate for 6,000 kids in the district on the dyslexic spectrum, I would like to tell you that a one-time investment of $83 per kid is at best inadequate and at worst insulting. You may say that insulting is a very strong word, so I would ask you to put that $83 per child in context, considering that it costs families more for a single hour of tutoring by an Orton Gillingham-trained professional than the total one-time investment the administration is proposing for each of our kids. Frankly, I don't see any scenario where 500K can do the job in a district the size of BVSD. Several months ago, you received a very modest plan to invest $1.2 million in a comprehensive district-wide program. That plan contained funding for four key areas where we need to invest to make the maximum long-term impact. $270,000 for Orton Gillingham teacher training, $25,000 in awareness training, $90,000 for screening, and $800,000 for new structured literacy curriculum materials and training in all K through 3 classes. The key to this new district-wide approach is prevention through early identification and intervention. As children grow older, the cost and time to make the same reading gains grows exponentially. With this new approach, our expected outcome will be to dramatically reduce the number of children in sped with a reading-related SLD. Assuming the district spends $10,000 per child on sped services, we need only prevent 120 children from entering sped in the first place to completely repay the initial investment of $1.2 million. Given the fact there are currently 998 children on IEPs with a reading-related SLD, we should far exceed that goal. We will also free up millions in annual sped resources that can be used for children with other very important needs. We're asking the board for your support to invest a long overdue amount of $1.2 million. The investment is not only a moral and legal obligation, but it makes financial sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janine Wire, who will be followed by Noel Davidson. Good evening, Ms. Wire.
Good evening, Noel. I am gravely concerned with the misinformation that continues to come from the literacy department in regards to dyslexia. In response to Mr. Meyer's RFI dated 4/21, the district quoted the International Literacy Association's Dyslexia Research Advisory. The International Dyslexia Association was quick to refute a lot of the claims made in that advisory. Even some of the researchers whose work had been misinterpreted asked the IDA to clarify on their behalf. The IDA ended their response saying, "The International Literacy Association's Dyslexia Research Advisory will find little support among professionals in our field. To say that there is not broad agreement on how to teach reading to children with dyslexia is a disservice to those children and families whose lives are affected by this condition." I'm appalled that the literacy department is using this advisory that has been refuted by the IDA for their continued lack, to support their continued lack of response outside of special education for children with dyslexia. Given the constant message of lack of funds for interventions, why did the district think it was appropriate to spend $100,000 of the $650,000 received under the REDACT on a summer school with no literacy program? The CDE investigated and concurred that the district was misusing REDACT funds. $233,000 of that $650 is used on systems for read plans and read assessments. $233,000 on assessments. On one hand, the board and parents are being told that there is little money for literacy and then the district turns around and takes money that's earmarked for literacy and spends it on a STEM summer school. What is this? Why is there such opposition to dyslexia in this district? Why not embrace it and implement the best practices to help these kids? What is the downside? Why do we parents have to fight so hard for this? Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Davidson is next, followed by Jamie Parker. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I have a handout first before you start my timer.
The board secretary and she'll distribute it to us.
Our district is woefully behind with dyslexia. I'm handing out the plan, the St. Vrain Valley School District's Education Plan for Dyslexia. They're actually ahead of schedule from what you're going to see in that plan. It's comprehensive and honestly, I'm thinking of moving my family because they have a plan. You guys don't have a plan. $500,000 isn't anything. It's breadcrumbs compared to the plan that exists 30 minutes away. So, you know, if we don't have a plan now, I feel like my kid's another three or four years behind. I'm going to read some of the summary from that since I've been working with administration in the St. Vrain District. They do screening at the kindergarten level. iReady is not used for kindergartners because they recognize it has low phonemic awareness and inconsistent with kindergartners. They use DIBELS and PALS to screen for dyslexia or just reading difficulty. DIBELS has been found to have stronger phonemic awareness, letter sound fluency, nonsense word fluency. They use DIBELS and PALS in tandem, 1st grade through 9th grade. iReady is added, but it's only used in tandem with the other two methods. They're also thinking of adding a student observation screening technique for the teachers to view students' performance in the classroom, to understand what their issues are. They believe in a universal screening, Tier 1 MSL, which is multi-sensory structured language, for 1st through 3rd grade. That needs to happen in Boulder Valley. Just giving Wilson at a Tier 2 or Tier 3 level is not going to do it. I don't want that happening to my kid. I don't want him struggling throughout the day and getting pullouts. He needs to have multi-sensory teaching methods throughout the school day. All kids need that. They also recognize that the literacy specialists look at the data and give what the kids need. They differentiate and they're not married to LLI and reading recovery like the literacy specialists in BVSD. Thank you. I hope you look at their plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Costello.
My name is Sean Costello and the father of two daughters who attend Pioneer. I stood before this board a year ago to plead for the job of an exemplary teacher at Pioneer. While that teacher was not renewed and my eldest daughter was placed in the classroom with the new teacher. To say this year has been difficult for my daughter and her classmates would be a gross understatement. I believe you would be appalled if you knew what these 10 and 11-year-old children were forced to endure this year. Yet, I am not here this evening to go over the past. I am here to ask for your help as we look to the future. Pioneer needs help. As a bilingual and a Title I school, Pioneer faces challenges many other schools do not. Allocating the same FTE to all elementary schools may be equal, but certainly is not equitable. Pioneer needs more teachers and support staff in a normal year. This year, I fear my daughter and her classmates are behind academically because of their emotional trauma. While the change in leadership is welcomed by many, a new principal is not enough to cure what ails Pioneer. Pioneer needs a smaller student-to-teacher ratio and I know this is not news to you. A BVSD committee led by Robin Fernandez, Executive Director of Elementary Education, reported as much to you a year ago. As I understand it, Pioneer is planning to create a 4th and 5th grade combination class next year. I, as well as many other parents, are not comfortable with this and do not wish our children to be the subjects of an experiment based solely on finances. While the teachers at Pioneer already have a tremendous workload teaching everything in two languages, asking a teacher to cover two grades' worth of curriculum seems overwhelming. Budgetary decisions are always difficult. There's a finite sum of money every year. As you finalize next year's budget, I ask you to remember value number two of the Boulder Valley School District. Societal inequities and unique learning needs will not be barriers to student success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jason Lopez is our next speaker, followed by Kelly Lopez. Good evening.
So this was written by teachers and parents at Pioneer. We, as concerned parents of students at Pioneer, implore BVSD to give Pioneer a 1.0 FTE for a classroom teacher for either 4th or 5th grade for the upcoming 2017-18 school year. As one of the best school districts in Colorado, please consider this plea from Pioneer parents. Here are the reasons why we are asking for this FTE for our bilingual school. Many classrooms have had considerable number of students with extreme social, emotional needs. There are safety concerns with some of these students. We need to lower classroom teacher-student ratios to deal with these behaviors. This year, many of Pioneer's classes have been at 25 to 27 students. Students are trying to learn all subjects in two languages. This is considerably harder than learning in one language. Teachers have few resources to deal with these extreme behaviors. Our school needs more support for these students. Perhaps a full-time psychologist, maybe a full-time counselor, an assistant principal, parent liaison to deal with daily discipline issues, a school behavioral specialist. Pioneer has implemented conscious discipline, which has been a step in the right direction to help kids manage their own behavior. We need to help teachers teach and all kids learn. Isn't our district concerned with closing the achievement gap? When we read on the BVSD website that a value for the district and measure of success is that social inequities and unique learning needs will not be a barrier to student success, we really have to wonder if this is true when we are not allocated adequate teaching staff to do this. We are really afraid of a mass exodus of supportive parents from Pioneer. This would be a real blow to our school community. Perhaps an administrative job at the district level needs to be cut in order to do this. A coaching or TOSA job perhaps. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Jason Lopez. My daughter attends Pioneer School. Before I continue, I'd like to ask us to all reflect on the fact that the decisions this board will make will have a direct and profound impact on our children's education and development. We all understand that funding is a major concern. However, your decisions must ultimately be motivated by the welfare of our children. With that in mind, I'm very concerned about the current proposal to combine 4th and 5th grade class at Pioneer. Such a combination would be budget-driven without regard to the impact on the students at our school. In the past four years, a lack of leadership at this school has allowed several serious concerns to develop. One of them is behavior that was touched on by Kelly. As a personal example we can share with you, earlier this year, in the 2nd grade, our daughter was struck in the back with a chair that was thrown by a student who had a multi-year documented history of negative, violent, physical behavior. It took this incident and this injury to our daughter for things to change, but people knew about this before. It was not unforeseeable. Another concern is internet safety. Students regularly are exposed to inappropriate and harmful content and in doing so, they expose fellow students. That needs to be addressed. And again, related to the concern with leadership, there's been a lack of transparency regarding critical incidents. The incident I just described with our daughter, the incident that's been described with a 4th grade teacher, there's been a complete lack of transparency in those areas and a lack of timely and substantive communication and follow-through with parental concerns with critical incidents and other areas of concern. The concerns I have articulated significantly undermine the confidence needed on the part of families to support and feel comfortable with such a great combination. I do have positive information to share with this board. Last night, many Pioneer parents had the opportunity to meet with Guillermo, our new principal. The meeting was very positive and productive. We are all very impressed with Guillermo. We sincerely believe he is committed to bringing true leadership and vision to Pioneer and we, as parents, are very much looking forward to working together with Guillermo to address our concerns and improve our school. Unfortunately, there's a lot of work to do to address our concerns and restore our confidence in our school. Combining the 4th and 5th grade class for the upcoming academic year will undermine such efforts to improve and be a grave disservice to our children.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Parker. Jamie Parker, followed by Samantha Reynolds.
Good evening. I'm the parent of a dyslexic high school student. My son Isaac spoke earlier. I am a single mother with very limited financial resources and I have placed my son's education in the hands of the teachers and the schools here in BVSD. My son's struggles began in kindergarten, but he was not diagnosed until the end of 5th grade with private testing. Over those years, we had many meetings and parent-teacher conferences. I was told over and over that there was nothing to suggest any underlying condition or learning disability and that he would eventually catch up. In 4th grade, he was failing enough to finally qualify for additional school testing. I was so excited to finally find out what was going on with him, but the test results reveal nothing. It wasn't until my son's 10-year-old checkup at the doctor, when I expressed my frustration and my son's growing anxiety with academics, that I was told by my pediatrician that the schools didn't have the resources or training to test for learning disabilities and that I would need to see a specialist for that. BVSD was unable to recognize my son's dyslexia and the teachers have lacked the training to teach my son to read or support him in the classroom. I lack the financial resources for tutors or for private school, so BVSD is all we have. have. Reading is the fundamental foundation of education, and if it's not adequately supported, all of the beautiful new facilities that we're building on top mean very little. To me, it's like going to a five-star restaurant and being served McDonald's. Our teachers need better training to screen and instruct children with dyslexia, and we need your budget and leadership to make that possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Samantha Reynolds is next, who will be followed by Deborah Kretovil. Good evening, Ms. Reynolds.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Samantha Reynolds, and I'm dyslexic, and I wanted to share my experience with you that I remember vividly from my own elementary school experience, which was one of shame and embarrassment in the sense that I was stupid. I couldn't read. I couldn't memorize times tables. It's not just the literacy piece. You have to think about how brains work. It's a different way of learning. It affects your math, your science, everything. And without early intervention, children spend years foundering, and it's completely unnecessary in this district for children to go through that. I have a daughter. She has dyslexia, slightly more severe than my own. I felt so insecure putting her in my own school district that I moved to, for this purpose, we moved to Boulder for this school district, that I chose to homeschool her because I knew she wouldn't get what she needed, and I didn't want her to go through what I did. So I ask you to please consider the very reasonable measures that have been put forward by the other speakers. Let's fix this for the 20% of children that deserve to feel good about their learning, even if they learn differently. Because the truth is, it impacts you economically. I'm not in the workforce because I'm home homeschooling my daughter instead. I sold industrial metal around the world. I figured out how to teach myself. We have the potential to serve our community in incredible and extraordinary ways, but we need your support. So please strongly consider and implement the offers that have been made. Let's finance what our community needs, and let's thrive even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Kretovil is next. Deborah Kretovil, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L. Oh, hi. And after that, Danielle Larson. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm here to speak. My son is also dyslexic, not unlike the stories that you've been hearing at all. The one thing that strikes me, though, is our journey. My son is 20, and the stories that these parents are telling tonight are exactly what we went through. He started out in kindergarten, had trouble reading, had trouble reading in first grade, second grade. By then, the teacher said, you know, he's going to be a whole-word reader, or he's going to be a spontaneous reader. Not only is that stupid, it's reckless. My son kept coming home crying every night. Mom, I'm not a reader. The other kids are reading. I'm not a reader. And I kept assuring him, although I really couldn't. I didn't know what was going on, but I suspected. So I did my homework. I went to the school over those three years, I don't even know how many times, asking, pleading, what's going on? What's wrong? I think he's dyslexic. No, no, no. He's just going to be a later reader. Well, he is dyslexic. I finally took him to a private neuropsychologist and had him diagnosed with dyslexia. Luckily, they told me, here's what you have to do. Because by the time we got him diagnosed, he was in third grade. That's pretty late. He should have been diagnosed kindergarten, first grade, easily. Easily, he could have been diagnosed. So we took him to a private. We had him evaluated, got a diagnosis, and she mapped out exactly what we needed to do. And it's not that easy because the schools don't provide it. So they recommended, by now, he was nine, and they recommended four hours a day, five days a week, at $110 an hour. So my husband and I tried to figure out how the heck we were going to achieve that, and it's a long story, but serendipity, we got the money. And I switched him to a private school because the public school was not receptive to him being removed half-day so that we could do what we needed to do. So we switched him to a private. I drove all the way to Littleton every day with my son, got him remediated, got him on the right track. But, long story short, in Boulder, and I now run a center for kids with dyslexia, so I understand this inside and out. I employ certified literacy specialists. But please, just here, because the anxiety, the shame, the humiliation, these kids don't have to experience it if they're identified early and given evidence-based instruction. And in an affluent town like Boulder, there's just no excuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Larson is next. Danielle Larson, who will be followed by Ruben Anguiano. Good evening, Ms. Larson.
Good evening. I'm the mother of two kids at Pioneer Elementary, and I spend two hours a day driving to and from my kid's school because I believe in bilingual education and I believe in the wonderful and caring community at Pioneer. I've also had the honor of spending the last two years as the PTA president at Pioneer. And for the last two years, I've watched as more and more parents and staff have become disillusioned by the lack of support for the students with severe behavioral and emotional issues and listened to the frustrated parents who believe their voices and concerns for their kids' well-being, education, and safety are being ignored. I'm not here tonight to rehash the incidents that have already happened, but the incidents you've been hearing about have only validated our parents' and staff's concerns. My goal is to make a passionate plea for you, the board, to seriously reconsider the significant funding cuts that are planned for the upcoming school year. I do not feel that the remaining students at our school should be penalized because of the attrition of students to other districts and schools, which I feel will only worsen if the proposed staffing cuts are implemented. Our community is very excited about our new principal and very hopeful that his experience and leadership will lead us in a new and positive direction. But we do not think it is fair to him or the school to ask him to resolve all the issues affecting us with his hands tied behind his back, which is what you are asking with the level of staffing cuts you're proposing. So I'd like to encourage you to give our school, staff, and community a chance to heal and repair itself before you add more fuel to the fire by severely slashing our budget. Please, look at the discretionary funding that you have available and provide our school and our new principal the funds we need to rebuild the parent and student trust so that Pioneer can be the exemplary bilingual school that I know it can be. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ruben Anguiano is next, who will be followed by Leanne Torada. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ruben Agüero, and I'm going to be with this session in English and Spanish. It's important because everything my peers have said is important. We believe in Pioneer. We believe in the legacy of Pioneer, and we also believe that our new leadership will help us get to where we want. But I'm going to talk about it a little bit more historically. Like, the gentleman talked about history in the front. I'm going to give a little history. We spent, over the last 10 years, trying to extend our school to a K-8, and we haven't got it yet. I drive my son all the way to Casey, which is an amazing school, by the way. An amazing school, Casey Middle School. And now Manhattan also has the bilingual. And I come in Manhattan, and yet, we're going through these budget cuts and folks like, you're going to get a bilingual school eventually at Pioneer. Maybe I'll be retiring by then, who knows? But the point is, is El Poder de Lafayette tiene muchos hispanos que quieren una educación bueno para sus hijos. Y es importante que en Pioneer tengamos buena educación. Con el señor Guillermo vamos a trabajar duro. Lafayette has a vibrant, diverse community, including Latinos. With our new leadership, we hope to move forward, as my colleague said, but it shouldn't just stop at the fifth grade. And they're building a brand-new school behind my house in Erie. And so I come to ask you, we're probably not going to get a new building, a retro building. I call our building the Frankenstein building because they've changed it so many times. And I understand that budgets are limited because I work in schools too. I work at CU Denver. But they're building a brand-new building behind us in Erie, and all we're asking for is, give us what Casey has. Give us what Manhattan has. Give us those three classrooms that they have at Casey. Six, my mistake, sorry. Six classrooms that they have at Casey. And my son goes to Casey and he gets amazing Spanish. Give us that at the new school at Middle Art. And I ask you this because Lafayette is part of the district, and we believe in a bilingual education, and we believe in Pioneer. That's why we're here. Y es importante saber que muchas familias que hablan español no venieron porque no pensaban que los iban a apoyar aquí. Pero yo estoy aquí de parte de las familias hispanas y las familias que hablan inglés, que nosotros necesitamos ayuda en Pioneer. It's important to know that I'm here on behalf of the English-speaking families and the Spanish-speaking families, because a lot of the Spanish-speaking families didn't feel comfortable coming to this meeting. But I'm here on behalf of them to say, give us the support we need at Pioneer and consider those six classrooms at the new school. I'm on the district accountability committee for Casey and for Pioneer as a sub. And I know that the new school doesn't have enough students. They're pulling students from St. Berne and other districts. We have plenty of out-of-district students at Pioneer that would love to go to the new school and have that. And we have plenty of kids in our district that would love that.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we're short on time, sir.
Muchas gracias. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Leanne Torada. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President and the Board of Education for BVSD. I was very excited to send my kids to school here since we live in Louisville. Since BVSD has the best reputation in Colorado, I am a teacher, and Adam's twelve, and we always talk about how wonderful BVSD is, but I have to say, my kids go to Pioneer and it does not seem very equitable for them. They recently had construction. Unfortunately, during the construction, many of the materials from the teachers, curriculum materials, instruments, a lot of their technology was stolen, and it has not yet been resolved at the school. I think that's not fair for the school to not treat Pioneer equitably. The playground that was built for the kids for a K through fifth-grade school was for two- to five-year-olds. That was the playground that we got from this construction. From the bond, the playground on our playground, they took out a nice playground, an old, and replaced it with an inappropriate-age playground. That's also inequitable. I also wanted to just bring up that BVSD's value number four is we value accountability and transparency at all levels. Last year, there were 20-plus parents and teachers who came to the board on Tuesday, April 12, 2016, to speak on behalf of Jenny Corani and Natalia Salata, who were being non-renewed at our school from the principal. The board refused to intervene. The consequences of that, the parents had to request a meeting from the district because our principal was not allowed to communicate to our community from the legal department about the situation. They sent to us on April 27, Wednesday in 2016, at 6:00 PM, the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Shelley Landgraf. Basically, there were eight points that came from the meeting. Parents have no voice in the matter. There's no avenue to retain teachers unless there's a direct appeal by the teacher to the superintendent. It's never been non-renewed, overturned by the superintendent. It was based on our principal's decision that that was the best for our school and they were not a good fit. And I'm not able to finish this, but I would like to say that two teachers that were hired in first grade, my daughter's in first grade, have not been able to have the support and don't have the skills to teach, and there have been tremendous movement from classes. Students have been moved into her classroom with behavioral problems. A classmate was moved from our room into a different classroom. My daughter, after meeting consecutive times with the teacher, and she's telling me they do narratives on whiteboards, that she's learning to read from doing word searches on the iPad for 45 minutes, and I requested, please, come into this room and help this teacher. She just moved my daughter into another room and moved her son into the teacher's room instead of dealing with the issues that are happening at our school. This is not transparent. This is not equitable for the students. This is not the only case. There are other students who have moved, students have left. It's such a travesty to this wonderful school that is promoting bilingual education that is not supportive of teachers who cannot manage. I mean, classrooms may not be as big as Sanchez. They might not be as big as Lafayette. However, our school is so unique, the situation must be dealt with differently. I am requesting differentiated funding. I am requesting for you to hear, and I know my time is up.
Yes, thank you.
But I am requesting that you look at Title I schools differently and really think about how you can better support us as a community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone who signed up for public participation whom we missed? All right. Oh, you have, there's one person. Hello, good evening.
I'm Gianna Butler, and I have no doubt but that each of you sitting there on the board has a strong commitment to public education. And in addition, in your interview, Mr. Myers, with the Daily Camera when you got elected, you said that one of your stated goals was to improve community trust and morale. The present board was also involved with Dr. Messenger in the Community Consensus Program, which was a collaborative effort by district administrators, teachers, and members to craft the BVSD mission/vision statement, which includes statements such as BVSD is respected by and respectful of students and families. We welcome the community into our decisions and work. The administration enjoys the confidence of all aspects of the community, and BVSD respects all people and viewpoints. I'm sure you see yourselves as law-abiding citizens of our state. However, the situation regarding Dr. Messenger, in that situation, you've several times sidestepped the Colorado law requiring that voting records be made public, and the heavy secrecy with which you've handled this situation has the tone of Dr. Messenger being guilty before even his innocence being proven, which brings everyone to the question of what is he being Not only have you sidestepped state law, but you've broken the trust of the community and teachers by your stringent lack of transparency and the lack of providing timely, accurate, and informative information. Certainly, Dr. Messenger has to answer to you, the school board who hired him, but need I remind you that you are answerable to us, your constituents of voting taxpayers? For you to engage in this power play in flagrant disregard of your vow to respect all people and viewpoints implies that you've forgotten that you are our public servants, answerable to all of us. I couldn't find evidence of any of you having actually taught in the trenches of a K-12 public education. If you had, you would well know the importance of having a skilled leader at the helm. When Dr. Messenger stepped into the superintendent position, he inherited a disaster of deceit and impropriety. Dr. Messenger quickly became an agent of change, believing in the importance of listening, of empowering others to find and share their voice in being part of the solution. Bruce has been a model of integrity, transparency, collaboration, and yes, willingness to interact with teachers and students as equals. As a BVSD teacher of 13 years, I can say that the district is positively humming with energy right now, which is why our students are doing so well. Please note that the teachers are not about to easily let go of the wonderful momentum of community and collegiality and goodwill that we have enjoyed under Dr. Messenger's tenure. That hum of positive energy absolutely flows down to benefit every single child in the district. And if nothing else, we teachers are organized and we are quick to rally around a cause for which we feel great passion, and that being the well-being of our students. I request of you that you reinstate Dr. Messenger as our superintendent.
Thank you. That concludes public participation. Thank you, everybody. We're going to need to take a short bathroom break. Hope we can call the meeting back to order. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. The next item on our agenda is board communication. Start by thanking everybody who came out to speak with the board during public participation, the parents of dyslexic students, the students themselves, the folks from, parents from Pioneer. We appreciate hearing from you very much. Also thank the folks who came out to talk about Dr. Messenger, and I want to just talk to you a bit about the procedure. The district has completed its investigation into the personnel matter involving the superintendent. We acknowledge that this process and the fact that the superintendent was placed on administrative leave during this investigation has been unsettling. Again, we want to thank the district leadership team, the teachers, and all BVSD staff for your continued dedication and professionalism. The board is bound by its nondiscrimination and equal opportunity policies and process. To that end, the investigation was conducted in a manner that respected the confidential nature of the information and protected the privacy of those involved. With this in mind, the board would like to provide some information about the process while emphasizing that there are certain aspects of the investigation that it cannot discuss. The board's goal was to ensure a prompt and independent investigation that complied with district policies. It began by retaining independent counsel who directed the investigation, appointing an alternative compliance officer, and retaining an experienced independent workplace investigator who conducted interviews and reviewed information. The compliance officer maintained regular and timely communication with all individuals, including Dr. Messenger and their counsel, throughout the process to maintain fairness and transparency among those involved. Throughout the investigation, which the board monitored, the board proceeded in a deliberative and cautious manner, seeking input from those involved while balancing and considering the interests of the individuals, the community, and the district as a whole. The board feels comfortable that it has acted fairly and in accordance with district policies. And while we cannot share the results of this investigation and acknowledge that this may be frustrating to some of you, we ask that you respect the confidential nature of the process now and in the future, and we appreciate your continued confidence. That's all from me. Board members, do you have anything else to communicate this time? Richard?
Sam, I just want to say that I was among a few other board members, Kathy and Tina and Jenny, that visited KC Middle School. And we went to go see the Advanced Language Arts Program in progress. And we also saw the 6th grade bilingual education language arts program in progress. And I personally was very pleased in terms of all the learning that was going on at KC. And very, very pleased in terms of the diversity that I saw in those particular classrooms and how comfortable they all felt in this particular Advanced Language Arts Program. And in particular, that bilingual LA class that I saw, where kids were really learning in one ear, the amount of Spanish that these particular kids learned was just amazing. So I just want to give kudos to the KC teachers and then the KC principal, the KC parents, for the support that they're giving KC Middle School. And I think we need to start continuing looking at other possibilities. I know the gentleman from Pioneer mentioned that they would like to see something similar to KC at Pioneer or someplace close. So we may want to start thinking about what we can do about that, too. The other thing, too, is I want to thank all the parents that were here concerning dyslexia. And I want to thank particularly Isaac and Posey for their presentation, because I thought that was pretty powerful. We have a lot to do in this district as it relates to dyslexia, and I was just looking very briefly at what our neighbor's school district is doing, and I think we ought to look at that and see what we can do about, hopefully, replicating some of the stuff that they have going there. The Pioneer parents, I am your representative at Pioneer, and I want to make sure that I understand everything that you're saying here. And I would like to ask our interim superintendent, Joe, to see what we can do about pursuing some, get more information as it relates to Pioneer Elementary. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Other comments? Kathy?
I'll just echo what Richard said about the tour at KC. It was impressive, and it was really nice to be able to go and actually stand in the classrooms and watch the instruction that was going on. Today, Jenny and I were able to go watch the kindergarten cadre at Birch, and again, it was the same kind of experience of just watching really experienced, highly qualified, amazing teachers. Every move in the classroom had some intended result for the students, and it was just great. And plus, just selfishly, getting to read with kindergarteners is really an awesome thing to be able to do anytime you can do it. It's a great thing to do. And then I was able to go to Uni Hill. Our congressman, Jared Polis, was there, and one of the students had invited him to come, and he, they had made bookmarks for him and for all of the congressmen. And so it was great, because he got bookmarks, and he brought them books from the Library of Congress and presented that to them, and they had a whole school assembly. And I have to say, Richard, you would have been impressed. I don't know if you've heard our congressman speak Spanish, but he addressed the whole school in Spanish, which was great. And it was just great to see the enthusiasm, but in some ways, it was also heartbreaking to hear the questions that they were asking him about immigration and about the current status of what's going to happen to some of their families. And he was very candid in his responses and his willingness to try to, you know, stand up for the, some of the students that were there. So it was just really heartwarming to be able to go. I hadn't been back to Uni Hill since my mother taught there, and I was, I don't know, I was probably in middle school at the time. So it was just great to go back and see all the great learning that's going on there. And to the parents of the dyslexic kids, I just want to say, we hear you, we take you seriously. I know that there was already an initial meeting of the task force that has been convened to try to pull everybody together to figure out what direction we're going in. We understand the resource constraints, but the need to dedicate resources, and we are working diligently on that. And so we appreciate you coming, and the voices of you and your children are very important to us as we try to balance all of the budgets. So thank you for taking the time to come, and know that we are taking it all very seriously.
Thanks, Kathy. Tom?
First, I'd like to address some comments on the lighter side. You know, we are approaching graduation, as Joe talked about. It's my favorite part of this job is graduation. Many of us will shake over 500 hands during the graduations ceremonies. There was one year that I shook close to 1,000 hands. But the reason it's one of my favorite times is you get to see what we do as a school district and how that affects people's lives, families, and of course, our students, and the hope, the ambition, the bright future ahead of our students as they graduate. And that's something that I am committed to and committed to making even better, so that they do have, you know, a bright future and that we graduate, our students like our vision and mission and goals talk about. So I think, you know, we've heard tonight from a lot of speakers, and again, thank everyone for coming. I thank you for the time you put into your comments and preparing for the comments, and I value all the input we receive. I will agree that with what we've heard tonight, these are difficult times we're going through. And it's difficult in many, many areas. And, you know, the first set of speakers talked about dark cloud, one gentleman talked about it, and I could feel the negative energy going from that. And, you know, we need to move forward in our school district. We need to address the students. Certainly, it's difficult to hear about how this school district has failed students, whether it's with some of our schools and our issues in schools or dyslexia. And that is, reminds me of really why we are here. We're really here for the students. That's what we're here for. And we need to focus our effort as a school district on moving forward, meeting the needs of our students is foremost, and getting over whatever problems we might have. So, you know, that's all I have to say, Sam, and it's probably enough.
All right, thanks, Tom. Any other comments, board members? No? Oh, yeah, Kathy, go ahead.
So I also forgot to mention that I went and met with some parents from Mesa Elementary, which was my kid's elementary school. And at first, there had been some concern over the ideal school day and the rearranging of the specialists, but it seems like they have understood the process and that they're feeling comfortable with that transition. I heard from some dyslexic parents as well. And what you said, Tom, was kind of reminded me of that, because there were some parents there who identified ways that we hadn't been able to meet the needs of the kids. And clearly, that remains our goal, is to be able to meet the needs for every kid that's in our system. So it was just nice to have the parents take the time to come and meet. And I'll just reiterate Tom's thanks and the board's thanks for everybody to come and share their feelings and their passions tonight, because it's really important to hear from everybody, and so I just want to say thank you.
Kathy? Anyone else? Shelley? Oh, and Richard has something to add.
Just one quick thing, Sam. I would be remiss to say that I attended a ceremony at Uni Hill Friday, Friday evening, where there must have been a couple of hundred Latino parents at University Hill, all being celebrated for their 12 classes that they did with engaging Latino parents advancing student outcomes. It was a wonderful, wonderful celebration.
Thanks, Richard. Shelley?
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, too, to speak. And I just want to thank the parents of dyslexic students so much for spending what is now looking like almost three years educating us about dyslexia. And it's taken a tremendous commitment by all of you to do that, and I want you to know that I personally appreciate it very much. And I agree with the one parent who came forward and asked the question, you know, what is the downside to us taking this very seriously and funding these kids with the interventions they need? And I would say that there is no downside. There's nothing but upside to doing that. So I want to thank Michael Bucy for coming forward and reminding us that the cost of doing that is about $1.2 million, which I'm convinced that we can find in this budget. And I look forward to our next budget work session where we talk about that. I also want to thank the parents who came on behalf of Pioneer. I will admit that I know very little about what's going on there. And Joe, I would reiterate Richard's request to find out more about that. So thanks for whatever information you can supply. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Other comments, board members? Yes, Jenny?
So I'd like to reiterate both what Richard and Kathy said. KC was great, and I really loved also the conversations with the leadership in the school about the philosophy of educating their students, which is a really- in the school about the philosophy of, of educating their students, which is a really kids-centered philosophy that I appreciate that. I see that in, in all the schools that I visit, that sort of kids-centered philosophy, and I appreciate it. Again, thanks to Birch for hosting us today, Kathy and I. I really enjoyed watching such an intentional kindergarten lesson, and I know we're working on spreading that, that, that skill to all of our kindergarten classrooms, and we're also working on making it, you know, working upward through the primary grades as, as we teach literacy. And one of the really great results of such intentional instruction, multi-century, they, I mean, working on all areas of literacy, is that every single child in that classroom is, is at grade level this, right now. And, and this is, and Birch is a Title I school where that was not true at the beginning of the year. And so I, I look forward to whatever their magic is, I, and I know it's not magic, it's skill. I misspoke. Spreading that all through our district. And then I also would like to say that Sam and I attended Parity graduation, and I think that's been since our last board meeting, so I don't think I've had a chance to comment on that. But Parity is a, a program in the district where we work with, we have people working with parents to help them be effective advocates for their children in our schools. And by the time they got to us, they've gotten pretty good at being effective advocates, and they had some, some, you know, some, some hard truths for us, or some, you know, real quests, some real hard questions for us as board members. And that's a program I'm very fond of and enjoy attending, and so I'd like to thank our district for working with parents in that way, and the more parents we can get in that kind of programming, I think, the better.
Thanks, Jenny. Tina?
Yeah, and I'll just also extend my thanks to everyone who came and shared their concerns. It's really helpful on the board to hear from all of you, whether it's about your support for Dr. Messenger, dyslexia, and the Pioneer parents, and I appreciate all the detail and the experiences and stories that you shared. And I, and since you brought up my name with KC, yes, I also went on the KC tour. I, my tour was cut short because my daughter goes there and had volunteered me to drive to Home Depot to pick up 50 succulents for Teacher Appreciation Day. So I missed the latter part, but was happy to contribute to Teacher Appreciation Day in what's actually a fairly easy way, so that's.
Thanks, Tina. Any other board communication? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is action items consent grouping, including 6.1 Personnel Items, 6.2 Approval of Minutes, April 25th, 2017 Special Meeting, 6.3 Approval of Minutes, April 25th, 2017 Regular Meeting, 6.4 Approval of Minutes, April 27th, 2017 Special Meeting, 6.5 Approval of Minutes, May 1st, 2017 Special Meeting, 6.6 Approval of Minutes, May 2nd, 2017 Special Meeting, 6.7 Acceptance of Donation, Fairview High School, 6.8 Acceptance of Donation, Superior Elementary, 6.9 A Word of Contract to Construct the New Bond-Funded Bus Maintenance and Transportation Facility, 6.10 Grant, Fairview High School Library Solar Panels, EBSCO, 6.11 Grant, Health Services, School Health Professionals, Colorado Department of Education, 6.12 Grant, New Vista High School, Colorado School Counselor Corps, Colorado Department of Education, and 6.13 Grant, Special Education, School-to-Work Program, Colorado Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve. Motion from Kathy, second, from Richard. Is there discussion of any items on the consent grouping? Hearing none, Laura, will you please call the vote on the consent grouping?
Bell Val?
Yes.
Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we'll move to the next items on our agenda, action items. The first is 7.1 Naming of Pete Sprinkle Field. Joe?
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Resolution 1715. The board is being asked this evening to approve the naming of Pete Sprinkle Field as per the attached resolution. I would like to also acknowledge we do have a special guest with us this evening, Pete Sprinkle. And so I'm going to ask Pete to make his way up to the podium, and I already warned him, so he had a little time to get up here. But, and during this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Benford, who's going to read into public record the resolution renaming the field.
So it's, it's my very great pleasure to offer this resolution in support of Pete Sprinkle. I know Pete because my daughter played softball with him for years, and because of that, I know what a tremendous influence he's been on hundreds, if not thousands, of girls who have played softball under him, many of, who went on to play in college. And Pete has given them something to look forward to for many, many years after introducing them at a very young age. So Pete, on behalf of all the girls that you've coached over the many years that you have done so, I want to thank you. And on behalf of the Boulder Valley School District, we would like to, you, for you to accept this very special honor, which we rarely give, which is naming a field after you. So I'd like to read the resolution, if you don't mind. This is Boulder Valley School District RE2 Resolution Number 17-15, Naming of Pete Sprinkle Field. Whereas the board recognizes in Policy FF that it is sometimes desirable to name an area of a facility such as an athletic field after a person that has made a significant contribution. Whereas the baseball field located on district property adjacent to Horizon's K8 School, commonly known as Burke Field, has historically been regarded by the community as an extension of the city of Boulder's Burke Park and is regularly used by district students and community members, most notably for girl softball activities. And whereas in December 2016, the presidents of the Foothills Kiwanis Club and the Boulder Valley Girl Softball Association recommended to the superintendent the naming of Pete Sprinkle Field, writing, "In September 1977, Pete Sprinkle, a member of the Foothills Kiwanis Club, moved to Boulder and saw Horizon Burke Field full of weeds and trash and not at all usable as a ball field for young people of Boulder. He saw the unusable field as an opportunity, and in 1978, he founded Boulder Valley Girl Softball Association, figuring that after a thorough cleanup in the spring of 1979, the field could become one of the venues for the new BVGSA program. Over the intervening years, Pete adopted the Horizon Field as a labor of love and maintained it until recently so that boys and girls in the BVGSA, YMCA, and South Boulder Little League programs would have a safe and acceptable place to play ball. In the mid-1980s, Pete worked with BVGSA and BVSD to increase the fencing and build a batting cage to enhance the utilization of the field. Then several years later, he again worked with BVS, BVGSA and BVSD to install a sprinkler system on both the ball field and surrounding park area. Every spring, Pete organized a cleanup day in conjunction with the Foothills Kiwanis Club of Boulder and cleaned up the fields and park area to get ready for the new season." And I participated in a couple of those cleanups. Several times, Pete, working with BVSD Operations and the Foothills Kiwanis Club, had trees planted in the park area to enhance the appearance of the park. A number of years ago, Pete bought a large drag, which he used on a regular basis to drag the field, using his own car to pull the drag, which both kept the weeds out and maintained the playing surface of the field as fairly flat. When the infield needed dirt, Pete worked with BVSD Operations staff to source and spread the dirt, thus maintaining a good playing surface for the field. That's so little of what Pete has done, but now therefore be it resolved that the Boulder Valley School District Board hereby approves the naming of Pete Sprinkle Field, adopted this ninth day of May 2017, Boulder Valley School District RE2."
Need a motion to approve this resolution? Laura, will you please call the vote on the resolution?
Bell Val?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to vote first. Yeah.
Bell, Bell Val?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Sprinkle, and thank you for all your efforts on behalf of our students and girl softball players in Boulder.
I'd like to thank the board, thank the Boulder Valley School District for this honor and recognition. I truly appreciate it. It's something I'll treasure for the rest of my life. And Shelley, thank you. It was great to have your daughter. I would say that she's a, as well as many other girls that I've had play for me, a great representative of our school district out in the, out in the college arena, both as a, an athlete and as a college student. And by the way, weather permitting, tomorrow, I will be, I will be out on the field. We're putting, doing a new system of maintenance that we think will make the field safer and better for the kids to play on, so we're going to get that started tomorrow, just coincidentally with this. But, so again, thank you very much. I really appreciate it, and I will, I will do my best to, in whatever time I have left, to keep working on that field.
Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We're at item 7.2 on our action items consideration of the superintendent's contract. I'm going to put forward a motion to unilaterally terminate the superintendent's contract per Section 9D of the contract. Need a second from Jenny? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Laura, could you please call the vote?
Bell Val?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let me just, let me just personally add, I just want to say, this has not been a quick or easy decision. The board wishes to assure the public and district employees that its action to terminate Dr. Messenger's contract has been undertaken with deliberation, under the guidance of legal counsel, and in conjunction with our district employment policy and process, which by statute could not be done publicly under these circumstances. The board has considered information from an investigator and the principles of the investigation prior to coming to this decision. This decision is a product of balancing the impacts upon the district, the rights of the parties in this investigation, and the board's responsibilities under district policies. The board appreciates the professionalism and integrity of the district staff as they worked through this uncertain period. With that, we move to a study item agenda setting. Board members, our agenda is set for the next several weeks. If you have any other items to contribute, please email me and copy our interim superintendent. And with that, I believe we're adjourned.